Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to the June 23rd River Falls City Council meeting. First thing we'll do is say the Pledge of Allegiance. John's gonna have to... Can't see the flag, John. Thank you, sir. There we go. Pledge allegiance to the flag. States of America, the Republic.
Republic.
Which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Justice for all.
Perfect. Thanks, John. Okay, Kristy, well, if you want to do a roll call, please.
Beerstead.
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Gagne. Marsette. Odine.
Here.
Plunkett.
Here.
Watson. Thank you.
Okay, next we'll go on to the approval of the minutes from the June 9th regular meeting.
Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the minutes from the June 9th regular meeting.
Second.
Second.
Kristy, we have first and second on the approval of the minutes.
Plunkett.
Aye.
Odine.
Aye.
Gagne.
Aye.
Marsette.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Miss.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Ed.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, next we'll approve the bills with Mr. Plunkett.
To approve the bills, Mr. Mayor, do I need to state the amount of that there? Or nine fifty-six, nine hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars and two cents?
Second, the motion with the approval with concurrence from the comptroller.
Okay, we have first and second on the approval of the bills, Kristy.
Can I ask for some discussion on that, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
I just like input from other members of the council as to what information they find relevant when they are reviewing the bills. And other things that they may have noticed that in the future I can use when doing that process that they would find beneficial.
Okay. Anybody have any insight for Mr. Plunkett, or you want to talk offline about that? You guys.
You know, I... And you're the comptroller, you go ahead.
Oh, I was, I was going to say I'd be happy to talk, Mr. Plunkett, I'd be happy to talk with you about that online. Generally, I review the bills to see if there's anything unexplained or unusually large. Or anything that I have questions about, I can ask staff about it. So it's just to keep an executive eye on the bills.
Okay. And then if anybody wants to reach out to Mr. Plunkett with any other suggestions, feel free.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I did want to just mention an oversight on the minutes. It was brought to staff's attention regarding Resolution Number 6489, ratifying the Chief of Police proclamation. The roll call vote passed with a six oh, with myself abstaining. That should have been an edit, so I do approve of the way it's written, but that is a clerical error.
Yeah, I think Kristy had sent that out to everybody this afternoon.
Yeah, I just see online it's still reflux that way.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have first and a second on the bills. Kristy?
Odine.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Marsette.
Aye.
Gagne.
Aye.
Beerstead.
Aye.
Plunkett.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next move on to public comments, if there's anybody has anything they'd like to say, now will be time to stand up. You want to kind of help them through that, John?
Are you on your license or?
No, just in general.
Sucker.
Just in general.
I think that's, I think that's, we're good.
Okay, so now we'll move on and we'll close the, we'll close, we'll close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on the annual liquor license and beer license renewals. And in that, we have two new agents be appointed. Hugh Ward for Holiday Station Store Number Eight, and Serena Weber for We Market down at the Co-op. Mr. Marsette, did you want to ask your questions now before we move on?
Yes, please, if I could. Is, is Mr. Ward online? Yes, sir. Mr. Ward, I, I ask every agent three basic questions as they become agents, regardless of the type of establishment. So I'll, I'll ask you the three questions, and if you could please answer them, I'd appreciate it. Do you understand the role of an agent? Yes, I do. Do you currently have a responsible bart, beer server, or liquor server's license, bartender's license? Yeah. Yeah. Do you understand that even if, even if you are not present and there's an alcohol-related violation at your establishment, you as agent are responsible? Yes, I do recognize I am responsible for all aspects of it. All right, thank you, that's all I have for Mr. Mayor for that applicant. Want me to, should I move on to Ms. Weber?
And Ms. Weber is unmuted.
Okay.
Ms. Weber, you probably heard the three questions, but I'll ask you the same questions. Do you understand the role of an agent?
Yes.
And I see by your application that you completed your responsible server's license?
Yes.
You understand that if you are, if you are, if there's an alcohol-related violation, even if you're not there, you are still responsible at the establishment?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, so does anybody else in the audience have any questions about the license renewals that we'll do first?
Yeah, I do, Mr. Mayor.
Well, no, wait, hang on a second.
Sorry.
This is for the public first. John, anybody in the audience has anything on the renewals?
No, we just have a couple agents here.
For the new one?
Right here.
Okay, we'll be, we'll be there in a little bit.
Okay.
So I will close the public hearing and reopen up the council hearing, and I will take a motion, well, first, go ahead, Mr. Plunkett, you had some...
I've got also several questions for both of the agents. To...
Still on?
What's that?
Both agents still on? You talking about the new agents?
Correct.
Is Hugh, are you and Serena, is Hugh and Serena still on?
I'm still here.
Okay.
And so am I.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Plunkett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, do you understand that a liquor license is a privilege, not a right?
Yes.
Yes, I do.
As part of that privilege, what steps has your business taken to protect the other members of the community from COVID-19 transmission that is likely to occur in indoor locations by unmasked individuals?
Well, We Market requires masks inside. We are wiping down things on a regular basis. And we have removed self-serve items. And do monitor how many people are in the store, although we aren't completely restricting people. We do things to try to keep people, to encourage people to shop at different times of the day and week.
Hold up on your response here, that is requiring masks of both employees and customers?
Yep.
Okay, and then at Holiday Station Stores, they are not required for customers. Employees are required when they're handling food products, such as on our food service area, that when they're cooking and handling the product, they are required to carry, or wear masks. They are required to wash up every time they get ready to start handling any food. We do wipe down everything at least every thirty minutes, all the counter surfaces, all the doors, gas pumps, et cetera.
Mr. Mayor, I believe you're muted still.
Is there anything else, Ben? Mr. Plunkett, that you wanted to ask?
No, I got the information from both of those agents, it will reflect what I do in my amendments here.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Ward and Ms. Weber.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we grant renewal for Class A beer license and Class A cider-only licenses contingent that all licensing requirements are met at the time of issuance for Indian Head Oil Company LLC, doing business as Holiday Station Store Number Eight.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this, we got a first and a second, any discussion?
I'd like to make an amendment to that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I would like to amend that motion to allow no sampling of beer or liquor on, or cider or liquor on premise, no sampling of alcohol on premise until such a time as the city council deems to allow it, and to require mask usage by customers and employees at all times while in indoor spaces until such a time as the council decides to rescind that conditions of the licensing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I will not be in favor of this amendment, as we have indicated in previous meetings.
Hey, Chris, hang on one second, if I don't get a second, we don't have to worry.
Yeah.
So if anybody wants to second this? Okay, no second? So let's go back to any discussion on the original motion. Kristy, we have a first and a second on the original motion, renewals for the Class A beer license and Class A cider-only license contingent that all licensing requirements are met at the time of issuance, and this is for Holiday Station Store Number Eight.
Kristy, I believe you're muted.
Well, Kristy, are you muted?
Mr. Gagne?
Yes.
Somebody typing?
Somebody is typing.
It looks like it missed, might be, might be Ms. Raleigh.
I apologize, I thought I was muted.
Okay. There you go, Crystal.
Mr. Plunkett. Mr. Plunkett?
Aye.
Ed.
Aye.
Marsette. Downing. Odine.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, move on to motion two.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we grant renewal for the combination Class A liquor and Class A beer licenses contingent that all licensing requirements are met at the time of issuance for Whole Earth Cooperative of River Falls, doing business as We Market Co-op.
Second.
Okay, we have first and a second, any discussion?
I'd like to propose an amendment, Mr. Mayor. Like to amend that, that there is no sampling of alcohol allowed on premise at the time, and that mask use be required of both customers and employees as a condition of licensure until such a time as the city council votes to remove that condition.
Okay, I got a first. No second, we'll go back to discussion on the original motion, any other discussion? Okay, Kristy, I have a first and a second on motion to grant renewals for the combination Class A liquor and Class A beer license contingent that all licensing requirements are met at the time of issuance, and this is for the Whole Earth Cooperative of River Falls, doing business as We Market Co-op.
Mr. Marsette.
Aye.
Plunkett.
So abstained from this one, I'm a member-owner of that establishment.
Gagne. Odine. I'm sorry, Diane.
Oh, aye.
Thank you. Beerstead.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, on to the next motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we grant renewal for Class B beer license contingent that all licensing requirements are met at the time of issuance for, I'm gonna screw this name up, I apologize in advance, Chelsea. Ballazy? Well, see, Kenny, doing business as Kenny Cafe.
Second.
Okay, we got a first and a second, any discussion?
I'd like to propose an amendment to this, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
That is the conditions of licensure, there be no sampling of alcohol on premise, and that all employees and customers are required to wear masks on premise until the city council removes that requirement of licensure.
Okay, I got a motion, do I have a second? Okay, no second, so we'll go back to any more discussion on the original motion. Okay, Kristy, we have a first and a second on the motion to grant renewals for the Class B beer licenses contingent that all licensing requirements are met at the time of issuance, and I will butcher the name too, this is for Bellazzy LLC, doing business as Kenny Cafe.
Mr. Plunkett.
So.
Beerstead.
Yes, aye.
Marsette.
Aye.
Gagne. Downing.
Aye.
Odine.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, and the next, next renewal?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we grant the renewal for the Class C wine license contingent that all liquor, that all licensing requirements are met at the time of issuance for Bellazzy LLC, doing business as Kenny Cafe.
Okay, we have a first and a second, is there any discussion?
I'd like to do an amendment to that, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
amend that, so that a condition of licensure is that no sampling of alcohol occurs on the premise at this time, and that all customers and employees are required to wear masks at all times.
Okay, I got a motion, is there a second? Okay, there's no second, so any more discussion on the original motion? Okay, Kristy, I have a, I have a first and a second for a grant renewal of the Class C wine license contingent that all licensing requirements are met at the time of issuance, and this is for Bellazzy LLC, doing business as Kenny Cafe.
Mr. Beerstead.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Plunkett.
Aye.
Odine.
Aye.
Gagne.
Aye.
Mr. Marsette.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so move on, and I'd like to, once again, close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on the request for a combination Class B liquor and Class B beer license, JR KM Management, doing business at Swinging Bridge Brewery at 122 South Main Street, and the other, the other request is from Jenna Burnak, doing business at Smokey Treats at 127 North Main Street. And is there anybody in the audience has something they'd like to say?
Their, their agents are here at the council chambers, if you'd like them to come up.
If they, if they want to say something, yes, they can.
Why don't you go ahead? Okay.
Okay.
Purpose of why they have come here in River Falls. I wouldn't give nothing to your renewal.
Yeah, we're gonna have these talks and they're like, yeah, we should.
Absolutely. We'll, we'll get it, you know? Hi guys, over here, my turn, my bad. I just wanted to kind of touch base on a couple of things, of theories, theories on by... They'll be deserved a license. I guess kind of the first thing is the density of bars to restaurants in town. Bars quite exceed restaurants. Being at the old license was from an establishment that was a restaurant, not that it must mean much, but it would be nice to continue what happened at some restaurants, whole-service or dining restaurant. Like that availability of liquor license. The next thing is we are in the works of purchasing our building as well. We talked about expansions, possibly doing like the whiskey bourbon kind of room or something in that manner. There'd be things outside of this short period of time until we purchase the building, I mean, possibly, you know, expand some of our operations per se. Potentially could be a twenty to twenty-five percent increase in gross sales and alcohol sales, or per se liquor sales. And not that it meant too much of a difference, but I shouldn't even say that. We also have a Bloody Mary sauce and seasoning wine that we'd like to be able to showcase, you know, in our restaurant during Sundays and anytime, maybe for that matter. Kind of all I have to say, it's a little weird. But appreciate it.
Thanks, Matt, anybody else?
Hi, Dan. How did you guys do? Oh, okay, sure. Hi there, I'm Damon Holter, speaking on the, on Smokey Treats as well. One of the things that I wanted to mention in regard to the liquor license, and as it, as it pertains to Smokey Treats is that, you know, I've, I've helped Matt and Gina put together a, what we like to consider a destination restaurant. I have a background in the restaurant industry that spans back twenty-five years, but more recently, background in a barbecue community. And that's a community of people that stretches pretty far and wide, and we've been able to see that with those folks that are coming here to River Falls to frequent our establishment. We constantly have people that are coming in from other areas, not just the community here, but folks that are coming to the community and bringing additional business to River Falls, because they, they gravitate towards this kind of menu and this kind of establishment. You know, friends and, and neighbors along this barbecue trail that extends, you know, from, from Iowa up to Canada have, have come to our place to, to eat, and they'll continue to do that. And by having the opportunity to have more of a whole-service restaurant that includes the opportunity to showcase some of those other things like Matt said, like the Bloody Marys, or having some craft cocktails that, that accent our barbecue menu, just makes it even more of a destination for those people that, that may not know what River Falls has to offer, but, you know, we can get them here and, and keep them coming back. So it's, it's one of the really big things that we see as a benefit to having that license in our establishment is that we're going to be able to draw in a different crowd, folks that are, that are looking for that, that comfort food experience and having the opportunity to have a cocktail to go along with it. It's, you know, for us, it's not about putting another bar on Main Street, it's about accentuating, you know, what we're already here and trying to build and they get what they already have, so, kind of what I wanted to say, thank you. Take your mask off. Yeah, yeah. So along the line, same lines as Smokey Treats, we're kind of in the same boat. Puts you guys in a tough position, but, you know, we're trying to build and expand. We changed Swing Bridge from just being a brewery to a group pub. You know, we've done that, it's given us the ability to expand the wine and hopefully now the spirits as well. It's also well-known for our bloody, we're well-known for cocktails as well, this would just allow us to continue to bring a larger crowd to downtown River Falls. You know, we serve food as well, it's not like it's just another bar, but we're just looking to be able to cater to a wider audience of people instead of just beer fans now, it's, you know, we have the house sodas, we have the food, we have wine, we have beer, hopefully we can have cocktails too. So we appreciate your vote, thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else? Okay. Okay, so we'll close the public hearing and reopen up the council hearing, and I will take a, a motion for this, I guess?
Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll make a motion so we can get some discussion going on this. I make a motion that we approve a request for a combination Class B liquor and Class B beer license for JR KM Management DBA Swinging Bridge Brewery, or Jenna Burnak, Smokey, doing business as Smokey Treats.
Second.
Okay, so we got a first and a second?
If I could.
Yep, go ahead.
This is, this is a tough decision for the council to make. I was, as I listened to the agents speak, I was, it was further, it was made further difficult, believe it or not, because they both were respectful of the other business, they, they, they played up their business, they talked about how this will enhance their business. They didn't try to downplay the other business, they didn't try to take a swipe at them. It just speaks that much more to the integrity of these two businesses that we have in town. Both these businesses are viewed very positively in the community, I think, for myself, I, I think both our current agents both have been, handled that role very well, and as you, as you know from my questions to agents, that's a, that's a key thing for me. Both of them have clear records. You know, it, it would be easier, to be honest with you, if one of them were a bad agent, so that we could, so the scales would be tipped, but that's not the case here. Whenever I make a decision, and I think, I, I think my fellow council members do the same thing, we look for a way to make the decision based on very quantitative, measurable things, do they comply with the ordinance, do they comply with this, do they meet these facts, these things? And, and, you know, staff has done a fantastic job. City Clerk White has sent out criteria for us to, to look at, and as I went through that criteria, it, it pointed to me as a further tie. It didn't, it was good, good to think about, but it didn't really help me come to any conclusion. And rather than enter into anything that's subjective, what I'd really like to do is, is, is make an amendment to the motion that a coin toss be made to, by, by the city clerk with both agents present, to determine who will be awarded the license. Furthermore, both, both parties shall be present for the coin toss, all applications shall be, and paperwork shall be in accepted order as a condition of issuance. So that's my motion.
I'll second that, I will second that.
Okay, so I got a first and a second on that, go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, I was in, in, in reading the applications and knowing about these businesses. I, I could easily justify awarding a license to either business, I, but there's no reason for me to deny it to the other. It's kind of like picking your favorite child, it's like you don't want to have to... It's kind of like picking your favorite child, it's like you don't want to have to justify why you didn't pick that one. Cause I don't think I can do it, I can't do it. I appreciate that they're both well respected businesses, I think both of them add to the diversity of offerings that downtown River Falls has. And I'm delighted that they've been successful up to this point and I wish them every future success, but. You know, all that being said, you know, sometimes, sometimes chance seems the fairest way to do things.
Mr. Mayor, I have a few questions if I could.
Yep.
Are we in, in discussion now, we have a first and a second, okay. So, so I guess my question is where does the quota of 19 come from, is that, is that a state rule based on population or how, where does that? How did we arrive at that?
Amy, or City Clerk Amy White is online, she can fill you in. There, Amy?
I am, I'm trying to get back to the meeting, I apologize. Okay, Mr. Pearson, could you repeat your question?
Yeah, I'm just curious where the quota of 19 comes from, is that something that, that we've just established here or is this a state regulation of some sort?
It's a state established quota based on our population and from 1994.
Okay, and yet. For $10,000, somebody can purchase an additional license, so is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So then, then if somebody does choose to buy a license, can they also resell it to someone else? Obviously, they need to meet all the requirements, the buyer, to recuperate their $10,000.
No, they cannot.
So it's just a one-time fee and they're just out the money?
Correct.
Okay.
But it would guarantee that that, that reserve license would, would have the opportunity to, for the first available license that became available.
Okay, so if I'm hearing you right, whoever is unsuccessful today does have the right of first refusal for the next license?
They wouldn't have the first refusal, if they chose to do the reserve license at $10,000. They would be the first to be able to obtain. Pending council approval, the next available regular license.
So they don't really get a license, they just get put to the, at the top of the list?
No, they would get issued the license.
Okay. I guess I'm a little confused why we have a quota, but you can buy one if you really want to. Does that money go to the city or to the state or who gets the money?
Mayor and council, that, essentially that's a feat of the Wisconsin Tavern League, so. They owe the credit for most of the craziness in our laws in Wisconsin for, for. So they intended it to limit the amount of liquor licenses available in a community in order to. Prove the value of the existing. Liquor license holders, so that's where the 10,000 came from. And the reserve licenses, there's also another option, which we haven't looked into too much because I don't think it helps in this case, but. Cities can now purchase apparently. Licenses from the neighboring towns and then sell them to, to establishments. But I don't believe that would help because I believe that the establishment would still pay the 10,000, so until we're through our reserve licenses, it isn't particularly helpful. There's also some limitations on us, some cities used to sell the $10,000. Reserve license and then issue a $9,400. Assistance grant to that business and there's some question about whether that can be done anymore also. So that's why this is where we're at, is the 19th matters a lot because of the. State law is structured, it's, there's a $9,400 difference between 19 and 20.
Do you expect that that will change after the census?
No, this is all based on, like the clerk said, basically holding things steady since some. Formula was established in the 90s.
Okay.
Not on similar, it's similar to other things the state has on its books. Change when the legislature is willing to change it.
Okay. Yep.
You know, I, I share the sentiment of the rest of the council that's spoken so far is this is an extremely difficult situation, position to be in. Both establishments have done a great job under their licenses that they currently have, building their establishments, their business, their client base and. You know, hearing from Smokey Treats and kind of how they're looking to expand. And the kind of pull that they have into the community, but also knowing. And hearing from emails as well, the other side from J R K M. Swinging Bridge and Juniors of what they've done in the community and with their businesses, they both really have a great reputation. So to really be able to pick that winner or loser is a really difficult situation for us to be in. One thing that I would. That I think would behoove the people that are before us today is whoever doesn't get picked, just keep your eyes out, you know? There might be licenses that open up in the future. You know, and if there's another establishment out there that might not be utilizing their class B beer and liquor licenses. Maybe they hand that down and get the correct license that might benefit their business unless they plan to use it. I, I really think those two options are really where we're stuck with at the moment and I, I definitely am in favor of doing a coin toss.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yep, yep, go ahead, Sean. Chris, you're, Chris, you're done?
So. The state law, I would, I would classify as fairly tyrannical, I believe both of these businesses are in good standing. If they weren't in good standing, I think that would be a cause for us to take action, but because they are both in good standing. It would logically be right to give them both a license, unfortunately, we don't have that power, so I support at a local level. What Councilmember Morris said has provided is. What I call a fair approach. I'd be voting in favor of this.
Any other discussion on the, the amendment to do a coin toss?
I think that was part of the original motion, wasn't it?
No, no, I, I, I made the original motion, Ben, with, with both parties named. So we could get discussion going and then after I had my comments, I made, I made a, I made a motion to amend and then Ms. Odean seconded.
Gotcha, thank you, my, my lack of clarity there.
So any other discussion on the amendment to do a coin flip? So we have, we have first and a second on the amendment to do a coin flip. Christie for the class B liquor and class B beer licenses. And this would involve both owners coming to City Hall with the City Clerk Amy doing the coin flip?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I just have you clarify that the city clerk will determine the method and process of doing the coin flip?
Yes, she, yeah, that, Amy, Amy will, Amy will set that up with the two owners. And get that figured out with them.
Thank you.
Yep. So Christie, if you want to do a roll call on that?
Okay, Mr. Plunkett.
Hi.
Hi.
Gagne.
Hi.
Hi.
Downing.
Hi.
Beerstead.
Hi.
Thank you.
Well, all I can say is good luck to both companies.
Now, Mr. Mr. Mayor, could I make just a quick comment? For the Smokey Treats application, I believe that the, the clerk needs to revisit with them. Question number nine asks about corporations and I, I think they need to select no for that, but I would, I would, I would defer to the clerk on that, but I think. Smokey Treats application, question number nine needs to be addressed as part of the complete application.
I spoke with Jackie on. I spoke with Jackie on Friday, I believe, and, or maybe it was Monday. Sunday, Monday, maybe before you guys got there. It was one that just got left blank on intentionally, so everything is no, there's no corporation or any type of entities like that.
Certainly, that, that not a, not a problem.
Perfect. Okay, now back to the original motion.
Like to make my amendment, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Like to amend those conditions of licensures to require. Mask usage by employees and customers at all times. Sampling of alcohol on the premise and. Off sale only until such a time as the council chooses to amend those conditions.
Okay. You have a motion, do I have a second? No second, is there any other discussion on the original motion?
Yeah, I'd like to ask the agents the questions that I asked for the previous agents, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. If the agent, if one of the agents could come up and then the other one come up after?
Okay, do you understand licenses a privilege and not a right? What step has your business taken to protect other members of the community and other businesses in our community? From transmission of COVID-19 through cases acquired at your business?
Much like everybody else said, we're taking extra sanitizing steps. We are requiring all of our staff to wear face masks, we're also requiring our staff to wear gloves. We're not requiring customers to wear masks in our location.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. So we were the first dining room to close in town and we are above the last one, I believe, other than Junior's dining room to open. Some of the steps, we removed some tables, kind of spaced out all the seating, you're not making our employees wear masks. Gloves, yes, extra sanitizing, same as. My biggest thing is, is we've been living this long enough that people know what they need to do and. I'm not going to force my employees to do something that they're not comfortable wearing masks and I just kind of left it up to. Customers if they don't feel comfortable, that is quite understandable.
Anything else, Mr. Plunkett?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Christie, I got a first and a second for request for a combination class B liquor and class B beer license. They are for J R K M Management doing business as Swinging Bridge Brewery. 122 South Main Street and one for Jenna Baranek doing business as Smokey Treats at 127 North Main Street.
Ms. Odean.
Hi.
Downing.
Hi.
Morsett.
No.
I'm sorry, Mr. Morsett.
Clarification?
This is on the original motion to give the license to both.
Yep, this is, this is a, on the original motion to give a license to one or the other.
It's going to be a coin toss?
Then it'll be, it'll be the coin toss when they set that up with the city clerk.
Mr. Morsett? Thank you, Gagne.
Hi.
Beerstead.
Hi.
Plunkett. I'm sorry, I didn't get that, Mr. Plunkett, was that a yes?
It was a yes, correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, Mr. Gagne?
I, I know we just voted on this, is, is this something that's going to happen at a later point or is this going to happen tonight?
No, this, the, the city clerk will set this up with both of them to come to City Hall and they'll, they'll get it figured out between the three of them how they're going to do it.
Sounds good, thanks.
And then Amy will let us know who the winner is, so. Okay, next, we'll move on to ordinance number 2020-06. Amendment in the official traffic control map of the city of River Falls. This will be for the speed limit on South Main Street from Cemetery Road north to the U W R F Falcon Center entrance. And this is the second read in the disposition, so I will take a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the ordinance approving a speed limit of 25 miles per hour on South Main Street from Cemetery Road north to U W R F Falcon Center entrance.
Second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, we have to go into public hearing first.
We need, we need a public hearing.
Sorry about that, okay, sorry guys, let's go, well, I'm going to close the council hearing and go into public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience has anything like to say about this? I'm sorry, what?
This is John, no, it does not seem that.
Okay.
People here interested in speaking on this.
Okay. Thanks, John, okay, so we'll close the public hearing and reopen up the council hearing and we have a first and a second. On the ordinance? Is there any discussion? Okay, Christie, we have a first and a second on ordinance 2020-06, amendment in the official traffic control map of the city of River Falls. This will decrease the speed limit on South Main from Cemetery Road north to the U W R F Falcon Center to 25 miles an hour.
Mr. Gagne. Plunkett. Beerstead.
Hi.
Hi.
Downing.
Hi.
I think that was it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear you call me, hi.
Nope.
That was a guess?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, question?
Yep.
When does this take effect?
When does what take effect?
The 25 mile an hour speed limit.
As soon as they get the signs up.
Okay, so it's effective immediately, then it's not after something is done, okay?
Soon as they get the signs up.
I assume that, I, I assume that this isn't going to be just a sign replacement, will there be some kind of flags? Put up to kind of indicate a change, I think that's kind of a standard in most communities I've seen.
I would, I would imagine, is Crystal still around?
All right, you can hear me right? Yeah, typically we'll install orange flags with the speed limit signs if they change, so we would do that here.
Fantastic, thank you.
Perfect. Okay. So let's move on to the dissent agenda. First, we have the acknowledgement of the following minutes, River Falls Housing Authority, 513. The River Falls Public Library from 54, the Police and Fire Commission from 56. The other one is a resolution awarding the 2020 sanitary grout and lining project. This would award the bid to Visu Sewer Incorporated. Does anybody want to pull anything?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull consent agenda item number six.
Okay, anything, anybody else?
Same.
I'll take a motion on the rest then.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of consent agenda item 5A through 5C.
Second.
Got a first and a second, any other discussion on that? Oh, or sorry, Christie, we have a, we have a first and a second on the acknowledgement of the. Dissent agenda item 5A, B and C.
Mr. Morsett.
Hi.
Plunkett. Gagne. Odean.
Hi.
Beerstead.
Hi.
Downing.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Downing, you pulled number six?
Resolution awarding 2020 sanitary grout and lining project.
I would just ask our city administrator if he could please give a brief summary of how this segues with our sewer interceptor project and a timeline he could provide, so everybody knows what we're looking at.
Sure, I'd be happy to. I know city engineer is also available if there's additional questions. In regards to the lining, this is a section of the sewer that would be south of where the North Interceptor Project is. So it's a key section that feeds the sewer plant from areas north. So one of the focuses here on our lining project is to just focus on that particular area. As is indicated in the memo, this is in somewhat poor condition, clay pipe. We do have about a third of the pipe in the system is clay, and we've been doing systematic grouting and lining of these areas. So in regards to the North Interceptor Project, there was some interest in starting that project this fall. We are looking, that is one of the projects that's being reconsidered for the capital improvement process. Understand what the timing is required to do that project. Likely that project is 22 or 23, which is in line with some of the the previous discussion we've had in the council. I think the earliest we talked about doing that project was starting something as early as the fall of 19, but that project got moved to fall of 20. And now we're looking probably 22 or 23 based on the capacity that we have in the system and getting this particular lining project done will take care of an important portion of that sewer. Crystal, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I think you covered it. I think we've done some analysis enough to know that our capacity in this segment of sewer is good as long as we can line the pipe and make it more structurally sound. So that's why we chose that lining for this segment. And then north of here, of course, we'll be looking at that interceptor project.
Could you explain to me real quick, Scott, how costs were estimated for this project?
Yes, yeah, essentially, these are linear footage type bids. We went out for bids on these. We video our sewers for inspection. And then the information that we have available in regards to size, type, and any video that we have of a sewer pipe that we want lined is then given to the bidders. We had a lot of bidders in this particular in this particular bid, and the bids tend to vary on this too. So I think you might look at this and go, what's, why would there be $110,000 bid? I would say from a layperson's perspective, what I've seen on these types of bids is depends on, each of the companies has a different kind of idea of what's a good project, what's a good project window. If they have a project, let's say in Minneapolis or Eagan or somewhere else that they're doing, and they think that project is gonna be somewhat compatible for their moving their crew. So that's how these prices are arrived at, is we basically get a bid for doing the a pretty standardized process of grouting and sealing it.
Clarification.
Sure.
I was gonna say, this is Kevin, the utility director, and one of the big advantage of doing this piece here is we're pretty excited about eliminating a lot of infiltration that's happening from groundwater through a lot of the joints there. This is gonna, that groundwater ends up, we have to treat that at the plant. So this is also gonna eliminate a lot of infiltrations. We're also excited about that.
Mr. Plunkett had question?
Just as an idea here, what are we looking at difference in cost between lining these and actually replacing that clay pipe with PVC as a standard now? And what is the lifetime of the lined clay?
Scott, I do have answers to that. I'd research that. So if you'd like me to go ahead?
Sure.
These are purely estimates, but it's about $300 a foot and potentially a little bit more with having to reroute that sewer while we're working on it. So that could be upwards of $650,000 to $900,000 to replace it. That section, so we're doing a lining for about $150,000, so substantially less to line. Lining, they say lasts anywhere 20 to 50 years for sewer lining. The capacity would probably be an issue prior to that lining wearing out, so. We looked at that as, yeah, substantially more to replace at about $300 on replacement. That help, man?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other questions? Okay, Sean?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the resolution awarding the 2020 sanitary grout lining project to VS Sewer Incorporated.
Okay, got a first and a second. Any other questions? Christie, we have a first and a second on the resolution awarding the 2020 sanitary grout and lining project.
Mr. Dean. Plunkett.
Hi.
Beerstead.
Hi.
Morsett.
Hi.
Gagne.
Hi.
Downing.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, next we'll move on to the administrative report. If anybody has any questions for Scott? Scott, whatever you have for us.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, thank you for continued patience with the newish technology. I believe you've been doing a good job of being diplomatic and patient with each other. And I've seen a few other city council meetings where that isn't the case in other communities, so. Appreciate everybody trying to work with us and letting us know and giving us feedback on how we can improve that process for you, so you can continue to serve in public. The mayor did announce in his video message this week that he is moving us to phase two of the plan. That will change some of the capacities that will allow at city facilities. We are not changing the the masking rules for our employees. In conjunction with that, we also will be, we have had all the phase two items in our plan reviewed by Pierce County Public Health Department. So to get concurrence with the direction that we're planning to move in. So statewide, there's still some trouble in some of the benchmarks. But we really did spend some time with the county health organization talking about what the benchmarks locally and regionally, and also some additional benchmarks that they have. And certainly, we're not in a situation where we should relax a lot, what we're doing. But we will be able to proceed with some activities, primarily outdoor activities. Being able, we're not reinstating recreational baseball or T-ball or some of those things. Just feel that there's not much left of the season time-wise for us to organize that with volunteers. And that we are able to offer some camps. They're gonna be done with the assistance of some community volunteers, because otherwise staffing would have been difficult to pull together for that also. But we had some community volunteers step forward to help provide some of those camps and activities, and we should be able to get the splash pad open any day now, so. We're waiting on the final kind of license and inspection for that. The splash pad will be limited to 50 folks in the splash pad area. And that'll be signed, and so we'll work with the public to help them understand. And frankly, everybody's kind of gotta go back to taking turns, so. We're not expecting to put a splash pad police officer out there to usher people in and out. But we would, obviously, we do have staff that can monitor the area. We're actively managing the aquatics and the lessons, so that we'll have staff there to help monitor how things are going. But when I say turns, we'll need people to kind of, you know, have your family and your group maybe be part of the 50 for a half an hour or so, and then we'd ask you to exit and then let other families in, because we, you know, it's possible that we'll have more than 50 folks at any one time wanting to use the splash pad. So we'll ask for the public's help on that and kind of keep an eye on it from a staffing perspective. The parks are looking great. Appreciate the work of operations crews, street line painting is being done. And so we're seeing a lot of a lot of sprucing up of the city, both in the public spaces and also a lot of private spaces work. We had we had, I think, 150-plus vehicles last night at the first night of the large item drop-off. So obviously, spring cleaning was delayed a little bit for some folks, but they they kept it and brought it, and so that continues to go on for the rest of this week, including Saturday. So we'll look forward to seeing those utility customers of the city and drop off some of those items. Otherwise, I'd be happy to take any questions about other things that have come up that you're interested in.
Sure, question for you, Scott. What events do we have tentatively planned on our schedule for up till the end of this year?
The city has virtually no events other than meetings. So there are community events that are being discussed still, but the chamber has indicated the only one they're considering is some kind of modified bacon bash, which I think they're they're not optimistic they'll be able to pull off. Because I don't, we don't think the guidelines will be much different, and so if that's the case, then the city's support of resources and labor won't be provided if, to any events that don't meet the guidelines. So that's, you know, the music in the park is a little bit of a bright spot. They worked directly with Pierce County Health, kind of come up with a specific plan for how to handle that. There again, they're gonna have to monitor things and see how it goes, but that's an event that can be held outside and probably is limited to 50 or so folks on a normal basis. It may become more popular than it has been in the past, and so we'll have to work with them to do that, but that's kind of things you're talking about. There isn't much, lots of outdoor recreation going on. Lots of kayaks and boats and fishing and rock throwing going on all over the Kinney. And I think we probably should have kept track of our steps as a community, because I think there's a lot of steps being being taken around town on our trails and sidewalk system.
Mayor. Yeah, I think that brings up a valid point, and as far as people getting out and, you know, enjoying the recreation. I do wanna put it out there that, you know, we're not out of the woods yet. There's still COVID-19, right? Across the world, and there's many areas struggling worse than others. I do know that the county board was meeting tonight, and you're speaking of COVID-19, and, you know, I really hope that our county health officer is working with our other counterpart in St. Craig County to make sure that we're, you know, unilaterally taking care of the city of River Falls, but I know they have a bigger picture, right? I do want to point out one thing. As of yesterday, I don't know if you can see that, but there's zero, I mean, zero active cases of COVID-19 in River Falls. I really want to commend the community for taking the steps necessary to protect themselves and others, while also taking the personal responsibility. And that's really where it comes down to in my mind, is personal responsibility of the individual, and it's your individual choice to be able to take the measures that are necessary for you and your family. But we have zero deaths in Pierce County and zero active cases of COVID-19. So great job by everybody. And one thing I'll add to that is Pierce County Board tonight is meeting regarding enacting a resolution or ordinance at the county level for the health officer, and it's at first reading. It'll be at second reading next round for them. So that's all.
Anybody else got anything for Scott?
Mr. Mayor, if I could. I just want to recognize Mike Stifter and his group. Sunday night, you may recall Father's Day. I got a text message from a resident down in the Rocky Branch area, down by the Rocky Branch School. They had a boulevard tree that blew over into the street. He was concerned about it. And I got ahold of Mike, and he dispatched somebody out there. They moved it off the street. It was laying across the street. They moved it off the street, but first thing Monday morning, they were out there to clean it up, did a great job. Citizen was very happy. It's those types of little touches that we do from a customer service standpoint, I think, that really that really have an impact with members in the community, residents in the community. It's not only them, it's, you know, it's everybody who has a touch with contact with clients or with residents, but I know we had a power outage a couple of days ago, and the utility guys were out as well. I think our residents really, really appreciate, number one, the notification that we make on social media, and number two, the quick response we have with things like a downed tree and things like a downed power line. So I really want to commend staff, especially during this time, especially the guys who went out on Father's Day night and took care of that little tree. So thank you very much.
Okay. Anybody else have anything for Scott? Okay. Next, we'll move on to the Comptroller's, Mr. Dean.
Yes, the Comptroller's report for May 2020. Journal front revenues through the end of May were $4,608,231, or 42% of budgeted revenues. Revenues in the month of May included $228,044 for Rural Fire Association. Expenditures for the same period were $4,420,298, or 40% of expenses. Expenditures for the month of May included $26,910 for appraisal services. And as of the end of May, net revenues over expenditures were $187,933.
Thanks, Dan. The only thing is I have, I'd like to appoint Rebecca Prendergrass to the planning commission through July of '23.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of your appointment.
Second.
Christie, you have a first and a second on the planning commission appointment?
Mr. Beerstead.
Hi.
Downing.
Hi.
Plunkett. Dean.
Hi.
Gagne.
Hi.
Morsett.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Move to adjourn.
So got a first and a second to adjourn? I'll just let everybody yell it out, all in favor?
Hi.
We are adjourned. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Another great.
Evening, everyone.
Thanks, John. That turned out great again. Appreciate it.